Are we on? Did I say yeah? All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Monday, September 23 regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. We are being recorded and maybe live on ECAT right now. I forget when we're up here. I think it's only recorded from here.
I think it's recorded. It's not live.
So, a couple things. First up are, we have received a request for the continued public hearings for 58 Mill Street definitive subdivision plan Owl Ridge Estates and the continued public hearing for 5 Owl Ridge Road. The same project for an estate lot. They would like to continue to our next meeting. Does someone care to make a motion for that?
Motion to continue 58 Mill Street and 5 Owl Ridge Road public hearings until the next meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up is the continued public hea-- well, it's really not a continued public hearing, right? Because we closed the public hearing.
Correct. It's very--
Discussion and a vote. This is regarding--
Deliberation, yep.
Right. This is deliberation of 16 Pheasant Lane, special permit common driveway, which we called at the last meeting. The applicant requested us to close it. We closed the public hearing and we held off on the vote.
You folks can come on--
Held off on the vote at the time because we would have needed a super majority. So, there will be no public input. There'll be no input from the applicant. I don't know if the town planner or any board members have any questions or comments for ourselves? Any discussions? And then we can move to a vote.
I just wanted to, and we talked about, I think this came up, but it's not shown on the plans.
Shh, please. I couldn't hear you, sorry.
And if the board votes to approve the special permit, I'd like to recommend that roof drains be required, roof runoff and roof drains.
Like infiltration?
Yes.
Because I remember we discussed that, that it's going to be handled at Concon, right? That that's what they would, I mean, we can certainly do that.
Yeah.
But when that, when that came up, I mentioned that maybe three meetings ago--
You did.
I thought I was told it was going to be handled at Concon.
You did. I think that, just considering some of the comments from the members of the public, that it wouldn't hurt to add it as a condition to any approval.
So, how are we going to handle to make sure that it's done in a way that we would want? Do they have to come back and show it to us at, once there's no at Concon?
You could, the condition could be that they, that when they go to conservation, the Conservation Commission, the plans show roof drains and that are sufficient.
They can show the plan to you, I guess.
Right.
Bring it to the planning department.
Yep.
Okay. So, anybody, board members, any questions or comments or any statements?
So, I do have a question, Greg. How we are so sure that this doesn't affect the drainage towards the road and the neighbors? Because it was a discussion back then and some of the neighbors came here and say, "It might be worse." You say, "No, because this water is going anyways all around and we are not changing majorly this area to have problems." You convinced that?
I'm convinced--
That will not be worse for neighbors.
Well, I think, you know, back 10 or 15 years ago when they, when they passed the, both the estate lot and the common driveway bylaws, special permits, I think they both, one of the things they have in common is it talks about existing drainage patterns and there's lots of areas of Easton, as we had mentioned before, lots of areas of this town are wet because the houses and roads and septic systems were built at or below the water table. That's, that's not allowed anymore. But, so, what we've done the last, I guess I answered, what we've done the last two or three meetings here is we asked them to revise the plans because there were--
Right.
I think in our opinions, you know, there was information missing that would, the only way we can be sure is first the plan needs to show the existing drainage going to remain.
That's what you're, that's what you're asking, right?
Right. Show the existing grades so that, in elevations, so we could understand how the current storm water flow pattern, how storm water currently flows and then show the proposed drainage, the, I'm sorry, the proposed elevations, so we can ensure that they match. Or will we direct the water the way it currently--
That's, yeah, because you weren't at the last meeting. That's right. So, for example, one of the things we talked about, or maybe you were here, I'm not sure.
No, I was there.
The septic, remember the septic system behind the existing house with the proposed septic was acting as a--
Right.
Peninsula.
Right.
A dam peninsula, but I mean, an actual dam.
That probably answered my question.
Yeah. And then, and part, you know, if, if, if the board votes to approve, I would think when we write the decision, one of the conditions would be a grading as-built.
Agreed.
To make sure it's built that way.
Yes, yes.
So, does that answer your question?
Yes, that's, and I'll note that that's being added to all the decisions is that there be as-bills provided after the project's completed.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. So, are there any, anybody else have any questions, comments? So, and this was just, so this is just common driveway?
Yes.
Nothing else?
Right.
I was thinking there was a second appendage, but there is--
No, there's, there's not an estate lot or, they were ANRs that were previously endorsed.
All right. So, well, the public meeting's been closed. We've run on the horn, so if, I'll entertain a motion if anyone cares to make.
Motion to vote on the special permit at 16 Pheasant Lane.
You don't get off that easy.
Regarding the common driveway.
Either motion to approve or a motion to--
Motion to approve.
So, okay, so I didn't mean--
I'll second that with the addition of roof drains.
In the, in the condition that we have a plan for grading, huh?
And an as-built plan. We're adding that as a standard condition on all projects.
So, I think I heard a second. Did we amend it? Did we all, are we, are we street legal?
You amended it with--
I suggested the addition of the roof drain requirement, roof drains to be approved by the planning partner.
Right. I mean, would you--
I can, I can revise, I can revise the motion.
Suzanne, did you get that?
Motion to approve the 16 Pheasant Lane special permit with the addition of, with the requirement of roof drains.
All right. And we, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's one opposed? One, so was that four to one? All right. Motion passes. That was anticlimactic. It's kind of hard to hear with this, isn't it? All right, so next up is a--
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is public meeting, 15 Roosevelt Circle, Building B, minor modification. Anybody here? I hate being this way. Can't hear you. Nobody here? Want to move on? So, we'll circle back to that, I guess. Southeastern Regional, is there anybody here for continued site plan review? No?
No, and we did not hear from them about continuing. I sent them an email last week asking if they were continuing.
Shh, so we can't continue it for them? Does it matter? Does it--
I don't--
The clock that's--
Suzanne, where are we at the, with the clock on 2:50 for a decision?
Oh, it's leaving. I have to look, but we're probably past it. It's been very long.
Yeah, I think we--
So, we need to withdraw without, do we need to--
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice? Should we do that?
Yeah. And then, it's a site plan, oh, it is, it is a permit though, right?
It's a site plan review.
It's a site plan review so that they can withdraw without prejudice and we don't need to re-notify. No, we will need to re-notify others. But they are not here and we have not heard from them and we've reached out to them several times.
All right. So, we should make a motion to withdraw. Anybody care to do that? This is 2:50, yeah.
I'll make a motion to withdraw 2:50, Foundry Street.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right. I assume the same people pushing, presenting for 15 Roosevelt are Weber Farms, so we'll hold off on that. Good, anybody for Goodspeed Estates?
Wait, this will be a record.
All right. Do you want a conversion of chapter 61?
Yeah.
Go and check downstairs, so you think--
No, I just want to ask these folks to--
I think Roosevelt Circle's probably coming. Greg, did we continue both meetings or just one? Did I miss a--
I think they're probably coming too, but--
Is that a double motion to continue the first two?
Yeah, the same, same project.
Yeah, okay.
So hot. So, let's do minutes while Stephanie goes around. Wow, we have three sets. So, we're going to do minutes, throw the heck of it. So, first up is 8:12.
Oh, here we go.
Too late. We withdrew. You're gone. So, let's, let's do the minutes and then, because I'm going to have to recuse myself in the second half anyway. So, I, yeah, this said I looked at these, I was fine with these. We looked at these last week, right? Didn't we?
I thought we did. 8:12.
Does anyone recall if the, if the channel letter, the sign that had channel letter-like signage, if that verbiage is correct on page two? If there's two-inch channel letters, sounds small, but I think the three-quarter to one-inch raised graphics was--
Yeah, no, two-inch channel letters and, no, that's I remember. And it's up.
Yes.
It's up. Which I think I might go to one-inch channel letters next time. It's a little--
Why, was it a little?
Let's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, but it's, it's better than, it's better than a piece of plexiglass.
They open quickly there. I mean, sure, it's just ready to go, but--
Well, we moved, you know, this is August 12th, six weeks ago.
Wow, ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, one at a time. So, August 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from August 12th as written.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next is August 20th. That son's birthday.
Yeah, probably. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, minutes for August 20th.
Second. All those in favor?
August 20th.
26th. Boy, we had a lot of meetings this month. No wonder. Can't get any work done. Mr. Strange said that roof drainage would be addressed by the Conservation Commission. There we have it. Look at that. I'm clairvoyant.
You did say that. And I still believe it should go in the--
No, I know, so it's all good. Which, that we, in the past, we used to have most on our plan anyways, you know?
Right, that, and these, right, it should have been on the plan.
We should just do that. I think next time we just say, you know, it's going to happen anyways.
I think we were focusing on the fact that the grades were insufficient.
Yeah, and there was even a discussion on whether they were necessary, I think, if I recall.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes for Monday, August 26th.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. So, let's see. 15 Roosevelt Circle, Building B, minor modification.
Suzanne, I'm going to-- Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. And you are?
Sam Schofield from Better City King Builders.
Welcome, Mr. Schofield.
Have to lean forward so we can hear.
Me too.
I'll go with the easy.
Thank you.
I increased the size of the voice. Thank you.
You only have one more?
No, no, no.
Go ahead, Sam. This is kind of a dense set. What I had done here is, is on the cover, one of the questions, making a note for the architectural plans having about the parapet, so you don't see the roof box. I have added it further into the plan set that's on the permit I--
Oh, you added the parapet?
Yeah, I added that note there. I just, as a comment, just to reassure that those are--
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that main section's a flat roof at some point?
At some point, yeah. It comes down for a three-foot parapet, so that will happen.
All right. So, what has changed since the last time? Besides the parapet?
Then, we went to the, some of the comments we received back was to add the weed fighting sign location, the directional arrows, the bike racks. We have a list. Also, we added a dumpster pad, which is known right in here, for the restaurant's park, our trash mitigation plan, that I've talked to the Eastport to help and they are okay with that location and revised trash mitigation plan that I submitted to them. We also had--
The-- Limit of work.
Yes, on, on 3.0, you'll see there's a hatch with a note attached to it over the Building B, future east, and the note says, "Park area to remain until Building B east is approved." Small number right there. Patching over it and distinguishing where that line is.
So, that drainage area won't be, that won't be constructed until east is approved? Is that the notation you--
That that area is not approved. All the drainage will be obstructed as part of this phase.
Okay, so that will--
The paving line will be in there and all--
That was one of my questions anyways, so.
So, you'll be doing the sidewalks and stuff that are just out around that?
Yeah, all the pub, all the pub safety would run there. I am also happy it to be taken out when we go to go build that, that area.
And the two-way road, rather, and a two with additional parking spots, is that, that's to accommodate the restaurant?
I can't see where you're hearing.
Yes.
Yes, to keep that flow there, then they can come around to that one way that's along Building C there for some other additional to come back out.
So, that increases the impervious area for the whole project or--
Actually decrease overall between the two projects because we eliminated the middle piece. I think we had about a .2 reduction in previous--
Yeah.
Yeah, on the red line. Because also what, what happened was at the end, in this area, at the end of the park lot area where that used to come down, there used to be a turnaround here that was paved. And then we now removed and turned to a green area, a little park area down, down this side, if you look at the landscape plan.
Oh, so that's not a turnaround anymore? That's--
No, that's actually all grass area now.
Right, so--
Yeah, we put the flag down.
So, you mean where the, the rain garden remains, but then around that is just a green area now?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So, Stephanie, are you, the report's the same one, right, from the last one?
Right. Yeah, and I just updated it and the, the address.
You're waiting on anything else or are we all set?
I, I just have, because I thought one of the comments, when you have, you show the directional, the flow, traffic flow directional arrows on the layout and rating plan and what I was looking for were, are these intended to be markings or are they just showing the flow on the plan?
I put these ones in here as a marker of the place. All the, those, the other thing we had added was the stop signs and the do not enter signs.
You added those.
But I think the arrows would help show the flow of traffic.
Yes, and that's what I was asking.
So, you're going to paint them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be painted.
Has that noted on the plans?
I, I couldn't see where it was.
I will make sure it's set, if, would get noted in the center step.
Yes.
Please.
Yeah.
And thank you.
And I think that was the, so the limit of work, again, presumably was the hat, hatched area. And, yeah, that's, yep, that was it. And you talked about the parapets that are hiding the infrastructure. Yep. So, I'm all set.
And the shade trees will be indigenous?
Yes. Our whole plant list is--
Yes, yeah.
They were just unspecified. I'm sure on shade tree.
Oh.
That's a, that's a general question. Do we have plans that shows what will be planted and how and all that or--
Yeah, it's on there. It's on page.
Yeah.
Page four, there's a landscape legend. I mowed lawns as a kid. Now, as I mow lawns as an adult, they just call me a fat guy who mows lawns.
Someone wanted to, right?
Landscape legend in his own--
Get the tank top to the end there.
Apparently, the west end of the table didn't find that very funny. Sorry, yeah, more of the left there.
Oh, yeah, that is--
Blame the AC, sure, sure. Well, this trick of the book.
It's hard to laugh if this gets spotted in here.
Yeah. It is warming.
Not to laugh.
Will this have an irrigation system?
Mostly closed, but have an irrigation system?
Yes. It was, we did the rest of the positive, so we have a rain garden, all the downs was compared.
I remember.
I think it would have to be for a modification.
Well, if it means, then we would use it.
No, it was, it was a minor modification, so it's not.
Minor driving public hearing, huh?
Yeah.
Motion to, to the plan with the reusing. Change is already requested. Yeah, more to the plan.
Big thanks for that.
They want to say it again. Hey, did you hear the mo, the motion?
I didn't actually.
I mean, they interrupted you guys.
Motion to approve the revised plan.
Second. See, you would have missed that. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All right. Motion passes. Next up is a Architectural Review, Lot 3 Matthews. I will high-five Deb over her way back in.
So, this is Owl Ridge?
I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. And you know what? We need to talk about the landscaping plan. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so, we have Weber Farms, Architectural Review, Lot 3, Matthew Drive. Have you already introduced yourself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sam, what was the date on these in the, yeah, this, oh, no. Because I did not see them. Right, but is it, no, the definitive subdivision is where you, I was looking for them today. I know we looked at them the other day.
This is 56, Weber.
Well, that's, that's 56.
Fifty-six what?
That's 104, that's why I entered it.
What? How is it named?
This is late lows.
Infirmatized. What's the file name? Because I did not, there's a 725, there's a 4--
It's Lot 3, I think it's Lot 3.
Oh, it's under--
It's not here. It's not here.
Easton Land.
That's what I, and it's in the definitive subdivision folder?
No, it would be in the--
Architectural folder.
No, no.
Oh, I, you're back to the job. I'm sorry.
So, it's in the definitive subdivision application, right?
Right.
And it's in the elevations folder?
Elevations, yes.
Right. I don't see, I, I'm missing something.
I see a lot of house designs here.
I don't see Lot 3.
Was this house design G, I think, dash Lot 3? Did you say that?
I don't see it.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I'm on the--
You didn't attach it here.
Yeah, see, mine's right here.
Where'd you put it? Here, under the--
It's Lot 3.
No?
Last one, I believe.
Is it the last one here?
I don't, I don't, I didn't see it. I mean, did you see it just now?
Well, I have it here from up here.
No, I have it, yeah.
I did that way with, with the house design G with the Lot 3 because, you know, if we want to use this design in the future, another lot, that's what I kind of did as one of our approved house designs. We are intending this one to be used on Lot 3.
Yeah, it is not in the elevations attachment that I can see.
Does everyone have a sufficient view of their plan to talk about this? So, Stephanie, did you have any comments?
No, I have no comments.
And the idea here is to have a barren tom house style? Is that the--
Yes.
The basics of the concept? Do any board members have any comments?
Are the windows on the right elevation smaller just because that's the, is that the garage side?
It's garage, so I'll be asking that.
I was just happy that these architects actually show windows on every side of the house now.
It wasn't really.
Was it one that had like a blank spot somewhere?
I wanted to know that, absolutely.
I'm not great at designing homes, but I do know that--
But, you know, they need windows.
Who need windows?
So, these vertical boards, are they all different styles, you know? Are they kind of similar as far as from building to building?
Similar building to building?
Yeah.
The backs, yeah.
Okay. Now, like, say like the metal roof is usually the same color or do those vary or what's--
We vary it a little bit. Just so there's a little difference, a little context between the two. Same with the cloud, it's just a little touch on. Because some of the houses don't have metal roofs on some, so there's a little change out there too.
But then the person buying the home can sort of specify what colors they want. Then they pick a color scheme and, right, they could be the same as the neighbor if they happen to think it's like, you know, really good, which is exactly what they want. Okay.
What is the footage?
2,500 roughly.
Stephanie, this footprint complies with the requirements? No, there was, there was a certain footprint stipulation for this development? Do we call that--
We don't have a site plan, we have to find with, yeah, shall we? Lot 3.
Not showing.
So, it's 58 by 54.
This is a plan here.
Yeah. It's pretty square.
It sort of looks like it's about similar proportions to most of the other lots from the inception and maybe like there was one that was a little longer.
Yeah, the one was a little more L-shaped.
Yeah.
I took, because of the different size of lots too, as we kind of come around, trying to get it, some of the furniture just kind of shoot down a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's what it.
Lot three, is it?
What is lot three?
That's the, that was a concept that I saw.
Yeah, I was just thinking that if we did specify a certain size footprint, most of them are going to be maxed out to begin with, so might as well.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Nope. Can't find it.
The definitive subdivision.
Trying to find the.
Well, there were several.
Lot numbers.
So is the one called thirty-three six three Baywood?
It's probably the latest date, like dated.
Two thousand and sixteen.
I think it ju, I think the way, it just, he didn't position, it's just the envelopes. Yeah. Just the envelopes.
I thought there was actually something to that. I have some.
Like the best cover is.
Yeah, I just thought it was footprint. I can remember looking at it on one of the first ones.
Because one of them we have is lot thirteen, that's one of the lot showcases that we did. I think that's over this twenty-five, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, this one doesn't say this.
It's not a big lot.
Yeah. A little lot inside, right.
It's nine thousand five hundred sixty-five square feet.
Well, maybe that's something to be. Oh, fifty-eight by fifty-four. That's a footprint.
Yeah.
Lot three. You want, you want to see it, Peter?
Oh, do I want to see it? Well, oh, you found it.
This is it, right?
Oh, I have.
Yeah, that's a lot. We look for the lots.
There's dimensions.
Oh, right, no, I haven't seen that before, yeah, that's just like the, that's kind of.
The lot looks a little smaller.
One hundred and thirty-two square feet.
Hundred feet long.
If it's fifty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, we just approve it as long as it complies with any, with any square.
The frontage look a little reduced, what is that, front?
Yeah, it's tight, that's why we, these things kind of make it a little longer than this way.
I mean, or fifty-four.
Is that the hundred forty or hundred and fifty, what is that?
No, this is a lot smaller. Flex would allow that, smaller.
I'm not sure why I thought that.
We have ten foot to, to offset, side to offset. Yeah.
Okay, well, in that case, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Residents lot number three Weber Farm plan as presented.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is only fifty-one.
And I think Greg will be coming back.
All right. Oops, sorry.
Greg, do you want me to explain what's going on with the conversion of Morse to Morse?
Yeah, I'm just making sure we didn't miss anything on the whole list. So, yeah, go ahead, yeah, you can talk.
With the good state of states.
But they're not here.
Okay, they're not here, I see.
All right, so Stephanie's going to discuss the conversion of chapter sixty-one lands.
Okay, so the board will remember a couple of months ago approving the A and R plans for fourteen and ten Morse Road. These are parcels that were part of a purchase street address, and it's the Morse Cranberry operation. These, this whole parcel was in chapter sixty-one A land, and for those of you who may not be familiar, chapter sixty-one A is a tax, a real estate tax discount program that was intended to encourage owners of open space land or agricultural land to keep it in that use. And what someone who applies for it receives is a discounted, it's a significantly discounted real estate tax rate. What it does is if there, if the landowner decides to convert that land out of that use, and in this case, chapter sixty-one A is agricultural use, if they decide to convert it out of that use to be used as a different, for a different purpose, in this case residential development, the town has the right of first refusal, and the property owner has to notify the town. If they have a purchase and sale agreement, the town has the right to, within twenty-one days, exercise that right of first refusal to purchase the property at the bona fide purchase and sale price. So these two parcels are being taken out of chapter sixty-one A, and the town has the right to first refusal, and is being asked whether they want to exercise that or not. The, so this gets distributed to the select board, the planning board, the conservation commission, the CPC reviewed this at their meeting last week. Wayne Beitler, who is the community planner, had suggested that the Affordable Housing Trust might be interested in purchasing these two lots for affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing development. The Affordable Housing Trust, because the projects that they've been working on over the last several years are all coming to fruition, the money that they have in their housing trust is tied up, so they were looking to see if the CPC had an interest. They did not seem to have that interest in exercising the right of first refusal. If the planning board thought there was a benefit to the town in acquiring the land, this is the opportunity to discuss what that might be and make a recommendation to the select board.
So just to reiterate what you just said, the land was purchased at, with a tax benefit, basically.
It's not purchased, it's put into.
It's received a tax benefit.
It receives a tax, yes.
For its original, the original intended use was agriculture.
Right.
And so now it's, they would like to convert it to residential. And since the housing has, doesn't have funds necessarily available, are other potential uses, like if we were, we thought it had value, it would be for the select people and the finance committee to think about ways that they might be able to fund it, fund the purchasing of it?
That, that could be.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there was someone interested in it, they could take the ball and run with, you know, CP, CPC decided not to, and some of the reasons were, I mean, it's a lot, they're priced at retail, there hasn't, you know, there's, looking at, looking at the, there's a historic district that the historical commission's working on in that area, local historic districts. And I think that just CPA, CPC just didn't have the appetite for it, and thought, you know, and, and mostly because it was going to have to come out of reserves, I think, so, you know, if, if Affordable Housing Trust had the money, sure. But, you know, they've been, they've been doing good work and moving forward, but, you know, I spoke of the main, there's, you know, if you want to pay, buy a lot of retail, there's plenty of lots in retail, you can buy, but.
It would have to go, so if, and if it, it was, was decided to use CPA funds, it would have to go to this Fall Town meeting in November. So very tight timeframe to get all of that done. Possible, but still. And I know the conservation commission has it on their agenda tonight to determine if they feel there's any value to it. But yes, it would go to the select board for a recommendation, and then funding would need to be, a decision would need to be made whether funding was going to be sought or not.
So is there actually a purchase price mentioned? Is that, I mean, is there, what's trigger?
Four forty, two twenty a lot, plus, plus expensive. Because don't forget for this, you know, one of the things, you're looking at, you know, the growing influence of, of, help me, happened on the Gil property, happened on Mill Street.
Oh, a natural heritage?
Natural heritage, thank you. I mean, we don't know, these lots, they have, they've been engineered in terms of property law. There's no separate design, there's no, so to do due diligence, you know, there may be, the town hasn't done very well by purchasing land for development in this part of town, thinking back to the three, three hundred pound before the soccer fields two decades ago, and, and then the Gil property, so conversation at CPA was also, you know, you're going to have to spend, you know, substantial money to, to find out if it's built, and then, then all of a sudden, it's like, you know, it came up because of sixty-one A triggered it, it had to come up.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I think, you know, we've brought a discussion whether the Affordable Housing Trust should, you know, start pulling more money in from other, other resources, or if, you know, if it's fulfilling its mandate as, you know, as the townspeople kind of want it to run at this point. So yes, because, just because something comes up for sale doesn't mean, okay, now we can start thinking about this. It's like something that you think about as far as the overall mandate and what the town wants to do. And then, you know, so rather than trying to, you try to rush and say, oh, we need to find some money because this isn't a great idea, it's more like, like get the plan together and then, you know, like, you know, settle on, settle on funding sources for the next available deal that, that they want, that would, you know.
Well, and that's what, that is what the Affordable Housing Trust has been doing. They just have a lot of projects that is, people are probably well aware, that have taken a long time to get to fruition. It's not an easy process.
Oh, you mean as far as, so some of the, some things will be sold, and then they'll be punched those.
That, that's right, and that, exactly. Or is, and, and that's, and part of their plan is to look when there's available property. So like they did with Electric Avenue, it was a piece of town land that was in tax title, and they sought to have the town turn it over for the purpose of an affordable unit. I think Greg's point is that this is, this is market rate, and it's a fully complying lot.
But even then, it's still.
That you could probably, if that's what you wanted to do, you could probably purchase another lot.
You know, CPA, we don't have an endless supply of money.
Right, right.
No, even on, even on tax title, I mean, it's the same thing, either the town could sell it for market rate, or just because you're getting a good deal on it, doesn't mean that, you know, the only option is to give it to the Affordable Housing Trust. No, I mean, oh, yeah, it's like there.
So I mean, I think to Stephanie, you know, this is up, this has come up because it's by law it has to, and CPA passed, and.
Right.
Maybe, you know, see what, you know, I don't think we'll.
And I mean, from the planning board's pers, right, in the planning board's perspective, it could be, I mean, if for some reason the planning board felt in looking at the master plan that this was an important parcel for natural resource preservation, it is, the two parcels are within an area that's been identified as primary natural resource area. However, it's the larger Cranberry block area that would probably be more important of these two small pieces.
When you look at the map, that entire section of Easton, yeah, primary resource area.
Right, right, and this is just a small.
And to buy a sliver of it, not protect it for four hundred and forty thousand.
Sounds like most of it.
I live something, Bob, that's something that really you have a use and something to do with it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it was larger, but, you know, I mean, it's, you know, right, so anyways, let's, are we, I mean, does anybody want, so, all right, so let's just move along.
Yeah, so the board's taking no action.
No action. All right, so potential bylaw amendments.
We skipped Godspeed, sorry.
They're not here.
What, or was he, was he here?
No, I don't think so.
Frank, are you here with Godspeed?
No.
Goodspeed?
No, he's here.
No, he's not Goodspeed.
I didn't think so.
All right, so let's get back, let's go, we're drifting. Marijuana overlay district. Stephanie, what do you got?
Okay, so the town has been approached by a firm that owns land on Turnpike Street. It's pretty much at the furthest end of Easton, on the easterly side of Turnpike Street. They've owned the land for a number of years. This firm does some real estate work, it also looks to, they, they have an arm that is a medical marijuana provider. They would, marijuana provider, they would like to build and develop a cultivation facility for marijuana on that site. The select board is considering it tonight. With the host agreement, it could generate a handsome sum of money for the town, revenue that would continue for the next five years, and it could possibly continue beyond that point. So the select, what we're proposing is an amendment to the medical marijuana overlay district that would add cultivation regardless of whether it's adult use or it's medical, and adding those two parcels to the district with the condition that those two parcels could only be used for cultivation. So right now, the overlay district encompasses the industrial park, and you could, any medical marijuana facility, including a dispensary, including a cultivation facility, or a manufacturing facility, could be allowed there. This would add cultivation of adult use marijuana to that district, and it would include those two parcels as part of the district, but cultivation only in those two parcels.
What are the addresses?
It's six twenty.
Two lots in.
Forty-two and six forty-four.
Going towards.
Yeah. Six forty-two and six forty-four.
So. Is, I, because you, you would, we're going to hold a public hearing.
Right.
And then we would recommend whatever, yes or no, pass that on to the selectmen.
Yes.
And then, and then the selectmen.
Then it would go on the town meeting warrant.
Selectmen would vote to put it on the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, so the way this would work, you'd need to amend the overlay district, the language there, you'd need to add a definition, there are a couple of definitions that would be changed. Some of the references to the medical marijuana have been updated through the regulatory changes. So you'd update that, and you'd add the definition of a cultivation facility, and then the map would be amended to add those two parcels.
Would that be in conjunction with any potential agreement beside the fact of any agreement ever takes place, or how does that work?
That, the zoning is separate, your zoning isn't contingent on an agreement, that would be something that would be worked out with the select.
Zoning needs to exist so that the selectmen can come to an agreement.
Exactly. And the other, the other amendment, which this board doesn't vote on or advance, but there would also have to be an amendment to the prohibition that was voted for adult use marijuana in two thousand and eighteen.
So what exactly is a cultivation facility? Does that mean like a greenhouse or something?
It, they, they have to be enclosed in a building.
They have to be.
Yeah, they're not, it's not an open air, it's not a greenhouse, there are very strict requirements for the building, and air quality control and the emission of odors outside of the building.
All of that is governed by state regulations, I assume?
Yes, yes, yes.
There's, we, three, three or four years ago, Gary Anderson, Stephanie's predecessor, myself, when the town, or when the state passed medical marijuana, we toured a couple facilities, grow facilities, and it's amazing the security to, it's, I think we went through, we went through like five hair locks to get in, you know, secure doors, armed guards, yeah, it's very.
It's also very sophisticated and intensive agriculture, it's not what you.
That's right, that's right. In fact, the horticulture is.
It's more like a factory than.
Right, no, I mean, there was, there was sort of like ten different stations.
No, it's not what you.
The electricity that you.
Like a greenhouse or something.
All right, fair enough.
And they don't save in anything because they're getting the money back.
Did you talk about the money?
No.
Or is that something we should talk about?
I, I, I don't think I need to at this point.
What's the, what's the site, what's the buildable land, what's the area that they're considering?
It's the, gosh, you asked that, I have it, it's, I don't have it written down here.
Maybe the front.
It is, it is quite a large parcel. I think one, one of the parcels is fifteen acres and the other is.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's.
Red over in the backside.
There are wetlands, there are wetlands in the back, but there is developable area.
Yeah, as far as buildable area, I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, if the board votes tonight to advance this to the hearing, then the articles will go right up on the website. We have them drafted.
Yeah.
Because of the upcoming meetings, do we have to work on this?
You have one shot.
You know, so you, may I, so as you know, we've, we've discussed various forms of marijuana zoning through the years. We've had lots of public hearings, or several public hearings, anyways, for different, when we first established the, the medical marijuana zone and then, yeah, we had, we had the meetings during the whole probe, for the prohibition, et cetera. And, and I know I, I've met with Stephanie, the town administrator, and spoken with some of the board, the selectmen that have contacted us and, you know, I'm like, so, you know, they asked my opinion, I said, well, hey, it's, it's contained, it's not retail, it's enclosed facility. No, I think it's bigger than planning board. I'd like to see us advance it to a public hearing and see where it goes, but then, you know, to me, this, this is a bigger one, this is for the town to decide. The process is it would go from us to the selectmen, to the, to the town. And, because I think we'll find there's, there's benefits, there's financial benefits for the town that.
Now, who's gonna write this, is it the staff or town council or what's the?
Yeah, Stephanie would, she's already, she's already.
So there's time, yeah, so that's, that's not an issue?
No, the time, we've got, no, it's, because no.
It's very tight, so you're, we're planning.
Who's doing what for the, I mean, what's the minimum round vacation for a week? I mean, it just, we kind of.
Okay, well, that's a good point because the meeting, the hearing date is October 15th.
Yeah, I want to be one of those.
It's October 7th.
No, it's.
It's not, it's not where it used to be in two weeks, you know what I mean?
What would the answer to your question, what is the size of this?
Well, I mean, as far as the buildable area, we don't have that answer yet, available right now.
October 15th. Okay, so in order to get this to town meeting, the board needs to meet on October 15th. It means we have to post the notice for the hearing tomorrow in order to meet the two weeks prior and two weeks notice timeframe. And then get a letter.
Is there any of these school meetings going downstairs?
No, we'll talk about those. It's the town meeting, because it's, October 28th is the school town meeting and then November 12th.
The final information seminar.
No, 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 we made sure, no, I mean, we made sure of that too.
So this is just to expand the whole land district by two parcels of land?
Yeah.
And those parcels have specific requirements as opposed to the other overlay district?
Yes, and you're adding adult use cultivation to the overlay district because currently it's just medical.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I guess my concern is just that, that the, you know, town council might have some ideas about how to sort of protect this from, you know, future, you know, have as these.
Town council is already.
That's being worked on.
Already, yeah.
But we'll, we'll get into that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying that as, as the state laws evolve, certain things sort of kind of quasi grandfathered in and like, it seems like sort of like a a snowball effect where if you've already, you know, approved it for one thing, then it's kind of a backdoor for the next thing that, that comes through.
Yeah, well, I think everyone was really clear.
My friend, yeah, okay.
That, that it, it's cultivation only.
Yes, yeah.
And so the language is really pretty specific.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any, I mean, your points won't take, but I don't think this is, this is, you know, marijuana's going on a fine tooth comb.
Yeah, but you know, it's the first that we hear of it and then it's like, okay, we're already halfway there and it's gonna be, it's gonna be all set in two weeks, then, you know, we just have to have questions.
Well, keep in mind, I mean, it's not, we, we already have an existing bylaw, so it's just amendment to that.
The, the butter meeting?
Sure.
Sure, all right, well, let's, I think we'll look at it in the next meeting.
Yeah, so we don't need to take a vote or anything?
Yeah, you do. You do need to take a vote to advance it to a hearing, yes.
I'll make a motion to.
With cultivation.
Hey guys. I'm gonna make a motion to advance the potential bylaw amendment on the marijuana overlay district to a public hearing. At the next public hearing.
Which is October.
October 15th.
No, I'm, it is October 15th, right? Yes.
Is there a second? A second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Were we considering like that area when we were, like.
No, we had done a 106 towards Mansfield.
Okay, yeah, I remember us like.
I thought there were two brothers that wanted to do something, yeah, I think it's the same guys right now.
I don't know.
Not brothers, but it's, it's.
So you wanted to talk about the.
Yeah, so, again, to kind of understand and, and just help the butters in the area know what's going on. Greg had suggested we have a meeting with the butters first to explain what the zoning amendment is that's being proposed and why it's being proposed and let them, it's kind of a listening session, let's hear what their concerns are so that that can be brought up in the hearing and addressed at that time. So we, I did draft a letter and we have the butters list so that if the board voted to move this forward, we could send it, but we need to pick a date to do that. And it's, it's really a small group and I would think we could schedule that for an hour. That does not require a quorum, I mean, it, I think it requires a quorum, but it doesn't.
Because we wouldn't be voting on anything.
You're not voting on anything, it's public info, yeah, right.
We would like a quorum, but the, the thought was, because you know, if, if, you know, going on the past, you know, there's not a lot of, the rest of the houses that are up there, I just thought, we didn't want, we just wanted to send out a letter so we didn't want them to hear about this on, you know, on Facebook or something or when they got a public notice. So, anyways. The week before, is that what you're thinking?
I, I'm open to what's going to work for the board. Pretty much, so the public, Wednesday the 9th is a good night, yeah.
Is a Jewish holiday if it makes any difference in terms of like.
Suzanne, what is, I don't have that on my calendar.
October 9th.
Do you know what, we could, okay, so the board doesn't.
Do you?
Generally try to avoid.
Do you think, so, because I guess, I mean, maybe, because it's coming up so quick and I know, I feel, once the letter goes up. See, I don't know if I was, you know, I don't know, maybe, I'm thinking necessarily we would have to have an additional, I was just thinking we should send them a letter to.
Just letting them know?
To alert them, you know, entirely, and, you know, you know, they could give the office a call or, and certainly invite them to the public hearing.
Okay.
That might be.
We can do that, that will, that certainly would be easier.
We had some meetings lately and these people all have lives.
Yeah, we just have to make sure we give the, any, anyone that's concerned plenty of time to.
And I think, I mean, you know, I think that might just, right, I think that might be the better way to do it.
Okay.
And come in on the 15th.
I think that's reasonable because I mean.
And then if they, right, and if they have any questions ahead of time and we can include a link to the.
Just all these, all these other things, you know, all these continuances, if they don't have their information to us in time for, you know, the staff to review it, then just they can, you know, we'll try, we'll try to put them in, but if we feel like the, you know, the story is gonna take a while, then we'll, we'll go with our rules and regulations and say, you know, well, you put it in on Friday, so it's not gonna happen on Monday.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, references to Board of Selectmen, that's, is that about the medical marijuana?
Oh, and that's the other, no, that's not about the, that's not about marijuana. So the, the board will remember that last May at annual town meeting, town voted to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So it's a gender neutral designation and they did that by general bylaw. The zoning bylaw has references throughout to Board of Selectmen and the only way to make that change is through a public hearing and then bring it to town meeting. So it's more of a housekeeping item.
You're gonna have to print the whole bylaw coming?
No, 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 it's very simple. It's the, the amendment which has already been written is the, the, the motion.
Now, is that for this, upcoming meeting?
The article, yes, yeah, for the town meeting.
Get to that, or will there be enough people to go to the last, the last?
Well, I hope there are enough people to go get to the marijuana too, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if it doesn't pass, it will, it will be put on the town meeting.
We have to hit, we have to hit.
It just seemed to make sense to eliminate one more article from the, yeah, and, and that's essentially what it says, for every, replace every instance
So that's fine.
Of Board of Selectmen with.
Put it on the docket, we'll tackle that.
Motion to advance the references to the Board of Selectmen to a public hearing on October 15th.
Starting.
All those in favor? Oh, all right, Lincoln Estates 2, request for lot release slash road bond. Let's roll. Places to go, people to see. Welcome, gentlemen.
Oh, I never received the letter. So Mr. Chair, the board will recall that Mr. Lincoln, I, Mr. Adams was at the last meeting. I think it was the last meeting of the board.
Mm-hmm.
Seeking a lot release for Lincoln Estates 2. He had a cost estimate that varied from the cost estimate that the town had put together. We agreed to go back, take a look at it, the town engineer did look at it, he was able to reduce some of the cost. In the meantime, Mr. Adams has completed work at the site. Okay, that's good, and that has reduced. Suzanne, we have, I have the cost estimate.
You have it, Jessica. I made them give it this one, right here.
Okay. So. That has reduced the road cost estimate to ninety-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-four cents with a three-year escalation rate of 10% per year for a total of one twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. And Mr. Adams would like a lot or both lots released.
Yes.
And is proposing to put up a bond, so I'll let you take it from there.
The amount was before I did the work. The amount of work that I have done.
Right, I thought we had the one that was. All right, so the work reduces the total cost to sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-three for the work that's remaining to be done.
Any change, is it, there a decimal point or just, that's an even number?
Sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-three and eighty-two cents.
And that includes your escalation and that includes a approved inspection, so you're all good with that?
So would you release two lots and in turn receive a bond, there'd be a bond for sixty-six?
No, we'll receive a bond and then in return release the lots.
Right, the vote, the vote would be to release the lots upon.
Motion to release the two lots at Lincoln Estates 2 upon acceptance of a bond for sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
Just change that to receipt of a bond, please.
Okay, mm-hmm, so moved, so changed?
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes. Earned your money there tonight, Frank.
Thank you very much.
It was the letter.
How much was that road cost estimate reduced by?
Sixty thousand. All right, planning board meeting change dates. Can you tell, you got a big deadline I'm working on?
We'll talk.
Who knows, I'm the one cutting out the chit chat tonight. Good luck, gentlemen. All right, what are we changing?
Okay.
I'm guessing we're changing the Monday, October 28th.
Oh, yeah, so there were two, both, both the the November and the October town meeting are the same night as the planning board meetings.
Twenty-eighth and what, which November, 12th?
November 12th.
So we need to pick a night that works?
Yep.
All right, let's see. Get our calendars out. I can do the 29th.
Yeah, this is an important one because of the public hearing, right, for the, for the zoning?
No, probably 15th.
No, that's the 15th, that doesn't conflict.
It's all right, it's all over.
It conflicts with Columbus Day, but, yeah. All right.
I'd be out of town on trial that entire week. Just FYI for everybody. No problem. We didn't really want you there anyways. Figured as much.
Yeah, that's kind of our.
Well, then we don't, I mean, we don't know what we're going to have on the agenda.
Twenty-ninth is sort of a crazy soccer practice night, but I think I can probably get there.
Do the 30th.
I can't do the 30th. I can do the 31st. We can dress up, we can have spooky planning board, we've never done that. We all dress up as famous Ameses. So, I'm sorry, Peter, what'd you say?
I was saying if everyone else thinks they can make it on the 29th, then I, I should be able.
Would it be better if it's try another week or no?
Um, Wednesday is not a good for Greg and Thursday is not a good night, so, not pretty much.
Oh, actually, you know what, I can do the 30th, I'm sorry.
Thirty is better for you.
I can do the 30th, Wednesday. Ladies, gentlemen?
So 10:30?
I prefer 6:30.
That works for me, the 30th.
All right, so we're gonna do the 30th?
Thirty, and then the November one?
You can still come dressed in your costume if you want, right?
I will, I did tonight.
Oh, we'll make sure I make a joke at least on the hearing, I got it.
Wait a minute.
Mischief night, wow, sounds. So the 12th.
Yes, but that's.
So the 12th, do we want to do it on the 13th?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody?
That's two nights in a row.
Huh?
I thought I had special town, well.
Oh, because special town meetings are, uh, well.
Why is this not on my calendar?
Want to just cancel the 12th?
Yeah, what it, because.
I picked it up down, I picked it up down there.
I don't have it on my calendar, sure, yeah.
All right, the 12th.
Why is it not on my calendar?
Scratch the 12th.
Well, the, wait, someone said the 13th, the 13th's fine.
It might all be tied.
With anyone else?
No, that's good.
Yeah.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
That may go long though. The 28th meeting's gonna go on.
All right, so we got the October 30th and November 13th? I'd say we, if we can't do the 13th, we should probably just cancel it.
Yeah.
Because the next week, I, I'm gone, and then it's Thanksgiving.
Well, let's put it there just in case this.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
We need to really get on the 13th.
We can handle it, hopefully.
That's it.
Yep.
So what was that, 15?
We are changing 1112 to 1111.
Special town. The school is the first special town meeting, right? The one where we have to take a helicopter?
So they can sign it. Oh.
The release.
So you want to, what do you want to say?
Okay.
It needs to release both lots.
Yeah. That one's crazy, you have to take a bus to Stonehill. Seriously, that's all they have.
The N lot A.
Yes, could you, so that we can get them.
Okay, so let's see, Chair's report, real quick, the only thing I have, just coming, as you know, I am the planning board rep on CPA and on October 24th, we are having the CPA reboot, we're calling it, at Frothingham Hall. There'll be more info coming, but basically, you know, it's been 18 years since we passed, since the town has passed CPA and as we know, CPA, 10% every year has to be earmarked for open space preservation, 10% for historical preservation and 10% for community housing and, and then after that, the town can choose what to do with it in those categories. But we thought, well, you know, in 18 years, there's been turnover, you know, there's a lot of new folks in town, a lot of people. been turnover. You know, there's a lot of new folks in town, a lot of people that were originally involved have moved on. And so we're hoping to have a fun and entertaining that we're gonna do on Facebook Live also to quickly talk about what CPA is for those who don't know and, um, show, you know, we've done some great things in Easton with it. And then see what, you know, where people, how they want their money spent and where they want it spent. Um, so, um, we can talk about it, uh, coming up more, but you might find it interesting to participate and help direct, um, where millions of dollars of your money will be spent. So anyways, we'll.
And you all should have received already, so if you didn't, you can let me know. But you should have received, um, a notice of the meeting via email? Nobody's.
Yes, I did. I think last week.
Okay, okay, good.
Um, so I think that's everything, right? Other than some signatures?
It was from Keys.
Yeah, that's.
Well, good.
Yep.
All right, who wants to bring us home?
I'm gonna do a journey.
Or we can just stay all night. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Easton. Thank you, ECATs.